This is the Wednesday, September 9th, 2020 Curriculum Evaluation Committee for the Nashville Board of Education. The Nashville School District is holding an emergency meeting pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, Section 8, and Emergency Order 12, Section 3. So we're meeting remotely. So if we will now call the roll. Ms. Gloria Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Paula Johnson?
Present.
And it looks like we have also Ms. Dottie Oden in attendance. And myself, Jessica Brown, is present, and we have a quorum. Let's see, Dr. McKinney is also present. Tara Consilla is here hosting the meeting. And we have Ms. Sharon Fletcher, who is a librarian. So glad to have you here tonight. So we're going to go ahead and get this meeting rolling. Let's start with our discussion on Capstone and PebbleGo remote curriculum.
Last meeting, there was some questions regarding using grant funds to purchase PebbleGo or Capstone for the elementary schools. I was following up on that meeting to have some of our librarians here to ask or answer some of your questions. So we have Sharon Fletcher, who's our head librarian, K to 12, who could begin speaking to PebbleGo. Ms. Fletcher?
Well, let me just give you a little bit of what PebbleGo is. PebbleGo is a reference resource. It is for the littles, for the, well, there's several pieces, but PebbleGo is for the littles. It's for K through 2. It has in it information on animals, science, social studies, biographies, and health. It contains both articles and books. It's research-based, developmentally appropriate, and it's connected with curriculum. There are additionally Spanish packs that connect to it, and the Spanish packs are pretty cool because they're trans-adapted. So instead of being word-for-word translations, it's actually spoken in typical Spanish and written in typical Spanish, which helps families that have all Spanish speakers, but it's also pretty cool for people who are learning English. Because I'm going to give you a little caveat here. I'm a high school librarian, but I think some of the things happen in both places. So what I see my students doing is sometimes they will read it in Spanish and then read it in English. And when I talked to Lexi, who works at, who worked at Ledge, she said that she found that their students did the same thing. And then the families also can help their children if they're Spanish-speaking. There's also PebbleGo Next. PebbleGo Next is a 3.5 platform. It contains information on states, science, American Indians, economics, and biographies. There is no Spanish packet that is connected to that. Again, it is developmentally appropriate. It is curriculum-based. It connects with students that are that age. It has a read aloud piece, so all students can either read it themselves, or they can have it read to them. And one of the other cool things about this is that the voice that reads it is a natural voice. So a lot of resources, when you hear them, it has the robotic voice that will drive you nuts after a period of time. It is not only naturally voiced, but it is naturally paced, so it's at a decent reading pace. It doesn't go too slow or too fast. And it has that little highlight, you know, that little bouncing ball thing, but it's highlighted as it goes, so the kids can follow along with the words as it reads it to them. I'm going to try to answer some of your questions because I was lurking in your last meeting, so I'm going to see how many of the questions I can answer. I will, I think Ms. Brown asked about, is it one publisher or many publishers? It is a publishing umbrella. So Capstone owns Picture Window Books, Pebble Books, Stone Arch, Compass Point, Capstone Press, and Capstone Editing. The thing to know about publishing is there are very few different publishing houses, and most publishing houses own other publishing. So most of our publishing is like that tiered thing. So another thing to know is that Capstone has a very good reputation, and it is written for the littles. And there's not a lot of good texts that are written for very small children that are clear and concise and easy for them to connect to. Other questions, it was asked about the ELL connection, and I mentioned that it has the trans-adapted Spanish. It is only trans-adapted to Spanish. But I think that the pieces in there, such as the reading to you in a regular voice and the little bouncing, it's not really a bouncing ball, but you know what I'm saying, helps those ELL students. I don't know. Does anybody have any other questions? Those are the ones that I'm remembering off the top of my head.
Thank you. Those are, actually, you answered most of my major questions. And just to double-check, this is, does go in line with our HB 612 data governance plan, so it's coordinated with that as well. Because I know that was something we've been looking, working towards, is making sure all of our digital curriculum follows that kind of equity for all the teachers and for the students.
Believe me, I'm drowning in that 1612 thing. Oh, there's Danielle. I'm drowning in that 1612 thing. I'm very aware of it, and yes, it has been checked, and it has been okay. It's been vetted, and it's a happy place. So yes, we're good there. It's also 508 compliant, so it does all the things it needs to do for special needs students.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Are there any questions about Capstone and PebbleGo from the other members? Yes, Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. Are we using that PebblesGo as we speak? Are we currently using that system or no?
PebbleGo is, the right to use PebbleGo was purchased by Ledge Street last year, so they have used it for a year. They are the only school who has used it at this point. One of the things that the Ledge librarian told me is that their kids would go on this in their free time. So it isn't just something that they attach to when they have to do a report. It's not just, oh, I had to do a duck report. I got to go find out about ducks. It's, oh my gosh, there's all this stuff to learn about, and I can go into PebbleGo or PebbleNext, and I can learn about it. So that is a pretty cool thing if kids are choosing to do, to use it on their own. And I think that part of that is because it's got such a good format. Kids can use it independently. And in this time, when we have so much going on, we have other pieces that have some of the same content in it, but the format for how to get to that content is really designed for older children. And so it makes it harder for the littles to get there. And this is really, really good for those small children.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Johnson, do you have anything to ask?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Also, I just had one more question, since this is new to most of our district. Will there be PD for teachers who are not familiar with it? Or is this something that we worked on over the last couple of weeks here?
Yeah, we have a representative who's very accessible. She's willing to do PD with teachers. I've been using it, so I'd be willing to do PD. And I know a lot of the other librarians are familiar with it, so I think a lot of the librarians would be able to help their own schools use it. And so definitely, there'll be plenty of PD, so.
It sounds like it's been really well-vetted. I'm glad to hear that it's the librarian's stamp of approval. Is there anything that you have to add at this point?
I do, I do. So I think, I think the thing that is important to realize is that while librarians are saying, we need this, we need this, we need this, when librarians are asking for resources, they're not asking for resources for librarians in a little pocket. It's not, we're not saying libraries need this. We need, we're saying our school district needs this. These are resources for the classroom. Librarians will use it to teach lessons on research and things like that, but we are really looking for resources that will help all students. And in light of 1612, this is even more dire and necessary.
Thank you. And actually, this might be for Dr. McKinney, or one of you ladies might be able to answer this. Can you remind us of the cost of this? This was a grant-funded proposal, and it was, was it $36,000 for the year? Is that right? Approximately?
About $25,900.
$25,900. All right. Excellent. And actually, so this is just in alignment with this. Are we working on any kind of ways to get hard copybooks in the hands of our kids through this next couple of months here?
Although, what we're discovering is that's a little harder than we thought at first, and we're really struggling through it. So this is a topic that we've been working on for weeks and weeks. One of the things that we're struggling with is that our Destiny library system at this point does not have a way to contact families. Can you still hear me? Okay, because my CPU usage is high. So we're trying to figure out, what we're planning on doing is starting very, very small. We're going to try to work with some small groups. We're going to try to work on different levels. I'm reaching out to my teachers this week, and I'm going to say, you know, teachers, do you need anything for your classrooms right now? I have a couple of teachers that I'm, or I have one teacher I'm going to start with that we are going to move forward to get books into the hands of his kids. When I get through that and figure out what the bumps and the kinks are, I'm going to go to two more teachers, and I'm going to work that out. And we're going to try to grow this slowly, because we don't want it to go badly. We would rather start slow and do it correctly. So yes, we're working on it. Yes, it's not fast. I mean, yes, some things need to be fixed. Like, we've got to be able to figure out, like, when they get the email addresses into X2, then my understanding is that they'll be able to pull them into Destiny. We have a help desk request already in for that. When they get into Destiny, then we have to make sure that they're going to work to get the information to the children or to the parents. So there will be those pieces for the bigger picture, and then for the smaller picture, we're just trying to figure out how we can do it in small pockets and get the ball rolling and get this figured out. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I'm really glad to hear that they're in the works. Yes, Ms. Timmons?
I have one other question. Are you still contributing hard copies, meaning books, to the Arlington Street Community Center?
We, she asked if we were giving hard copies of books to the Arlington Community Center. If I know what--
Community Center.
Yeah. We actually, and we haven't been, but we actually get a lot of donations. And if I know what they're looking for, I certainly can start making that happen. I don't know if you want to reach out to me, or if I should reach out to the Arlington Community Center, but we can work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful. All right. So this item, actually, we passed the motion to move it up to the full board meeting last time, so I don't think we need a motion this evening. But I feel a lot more confident sending it in front of the full board with our questions answered. So I really appreciate Ms. Wells and Ms. Fletcher. You guys have been very thorough. Thank you very much for answering all our questions.
Thank you.
So you're free to hang out and listen in, or if you'd like to have a quiet evening, you may be released. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Danielle.
Yes, thank you for listening. I appreciate that.
I'm going to bounce and then listen to you through the TV, because I do want to hear what's going on. So thank you for inviting us.
Excellent.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. So next, we have the receipt of funds from the NEF Science Center. So Dr. McKinney, would you like to tell us about that?
Yes, about probably, maybe a year ago, it's hard to tell now, the NEF approached us with revisiting a project they had wanted to start, which is a NEF Science Center, which would help replenish all the science supplies that the district goes through at the K to 8 level. So I'm happy to share that they have sent a check for the amount of $14,401.04 to be used for purchasing elementary science materials, mainly our mystery science materials, K to 4. So I'm asking the board's support in accepting these funds, acknowledging the support of the NEF, so we can purchase some science materials and make up some kind of science take-home kits for kids to do some science during remote and hybrid learning.
Excellent. We do like receiving funds. So could, is there any questions from the committee?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Okay. So you're talking about taking kids home during hybrid, but how would you get kids through remote learning? Is it going to be through remote, or would parents have to come and pick it up? How would we do that?
We've done drive-through pickups. We can arrange drop-offs. We've done a number of different things that are pretty creative. So just like, for the start of remote learning, parents stop by and pick things up. We may ask parents now and again to do the same thing. And most of these materials are, you know, not very expensive. They're consumables, paper clips, Q-tips, paper-based materials that would have to be replenished annually anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I like that clarification, that these are single-use items for small, at-home science experiments, basically, or in classroom, depending on the situation. Right? Excellent. Any questions, Ms. Timmons?
No, no, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. So I would like a motion to accept the funds from the NEF Science Center to be used for our science curriculum room and acknowledge their assistance with us.
So moved.
All right. And I'll take a second from Ms. Timmons. So Paula Johnson for the movement, and Ms. Timmons for the second. And so, Ms. Timmons, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. And Jessica Brown votes yes. So unanimously, we accept the funds, and this will go in front of the whole board. Thank you. Yay. All right. So next, we have a curriculum update on our agenda. So Dr. McKinney, take it away. Update us.
Included in your packet is an update from our last meeting, just giving an overview of some of the professional development that was held and attendance, the different topics that were covered, also giving recognition to teachers who attended some PD over the summer. Included there is also some references to revisions in the Remote Instruction Handbook, as well as forming of a district learning committee that'll include our tech peer coaches, tech integrators, and RTAs to share key resources for remote and hybrid instruction. And we're going to have representation from all the 18 buildings. So happy to answer any questions on that, but I just wanted to give the board an update on a snapshot of some of the things that have been going on.
Thank you. So I actually was pleased to see that you altered the middle school curriculum schedule a bit away from the A-week, B-week. Can you describe the function of that schedule?
Unfortunately, I can't.
Sorry.
But I'm happy to refer to Mr. Parker and his team to get back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Do I have anything from the committee members? Any questions?
I have none.
I have one, Ms. Brown.
Go ahead, Ms. Oden.
Okay. I was just wondering, what was the cost of 100 seats for the PD?
The first one on the memo in the update?
I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Okay. So there was 100 seats at the Nashville 2020 Learning Summit, and over 150 people attended. That was a shared cost between technology and curriculum. And it was about $10,000, $5,000 per department.
And can I follow up? Was Nashville limited to the 100 seats? Because some people have said they tried to get in and they couldn't get in, and I didn't know if there was maybe a limit to how many seats that Nashville could buy.
There was a limit. It was kind of very short notice. And NHTI put it together, really did a great job. I don't think it'll be the last time we use them, but we did get acceptance from all the presenters, and we have access to the recordings. So if people were unable to attend, they certainly can have access to all the presentations or workshops.
And do we have permission to do that?
Of course.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
I wasn't filming by myself, so definitely get permission.
Well, a lot of times, these people don't like you to replay their presentations.
No, they were very gracious with that. And the coordinator at NHTI, you know, I think going into next year, we'll probably do something like this, but maybe bigger with more seats and share the costs with other districts as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Dr. McKinney, on those PD sessions, whether they're outside of a district or in the district, do the teachers and the people who participate have an opportunity to evaluate what they got out of the experience?
I mean, critique?
Critique it, or afterwards, they get to say, this was great. This was the best PD I've ever heard. You know, anything like that, or say, you know, I feel like this other organization provided better assistance. Is there anything like that that we do to follow up with folks?
Yep, there's a forum that's included in our Professional Development Master Plan that's also in the Frontline Professional Growth System. So after people attend a workshop, they can evaluate it, give their feedback. The presenter gets to see it, and then we can go through the results, either by, you know, grade, subject, department, the whole district. And we certainly want to do that. We want the, you know, the really good PD that's a great hit for teachers to come back and present again.
Thank you. All right. Well, I thought the packet was very informative. Thank you very much for that. If there's no further questions, we can move on to the Elementary Essential Standards, Scope, and Sequences.
This is a response to a request at one of our last full board meetings. I don't call which one, to include examples of the scope and sequence that are relative to COVID and COVID learning loss and the focus standards. So including your packet, you have example for science, some of the focus standards for mathematics. The third page there, the mini lesson must-do per grade. We had a great group of teachers work virtually over the summer with our elementary literacy coach and put together assessments that go with the mini lessons that we purchased from Fuentes and Pennell. And then you also have an example of the scope and sequence for the Lucy Cawkins Units of Study Virtual Teaching Resources. So I provide those to the board, and as noted in the memo, they're all on the elementary curriculum website for teachers to review, and those were part of the PD days in the beginning that the coaches went over with the teachers and the schools.
Does anyone have any questions on those documents?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. So when are we going to, I guess, evaluate the students, how many weeks into remote hybrid, to make sure that they haven't fallen behind with all the programs that we're setting up for them?
Well, in terms of a formal evaluation, there is the state assessment that's in October. Informally, teachers are evaluating students on a regular basis. I am working with the coaches and the school principals in setting up our district goals and our school goals, and I'm happy to share those with the committee that'll outline the expectations for student performance and how they'll do in literacy and math.
So we're setting that up now? For the district and the school goals, you're in the process of setting everything up now for the school year? Is that what I kind of understood?
Yes, but we have evaluations and instruments set in place. We use the Eureka Math. We use Zern. We use the Fuentes and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System. The kids are getting the state assessment in the fall and the spring, and I'm happy to share progress and their goals to the committee at any time.
Okay. So I guess, follow-up here is that where our students are going to be either remote or hybrid, how are we going to administer the state assessments? Is it going to be through Zoom type of thing, Google Classroom, that they will be getting the assessments versus in the classroom state assessments?
So the state has contracted with an outside provider, Demonstrator Success, who provides free PD for teachers. That was one of the options for teachers during those days of PD before school started. And yes, the kids can take those assessments remotely. You know, our preference would be to do it in person if we go hybrid, but we do have the option of giving our assessments in a remote environment.
Okay, so I guess that builds on to my next question. So if we go hybrid, and we're only in the classrooms two and a half days, which I just am perplexed about this whole thing, the kid's already in the classroom, why wouldn't you make it a full day? You're already there for two days. How is that going to kind of fit into the schedule? Because, I mean, you're only having halftime, I mean, in two days. Two days equal one day. I guess I'm getting that right. So how are we going to really do the assessment and not have the students lose any learning time, because they're only going to be there two and a half, two half-days? I mean, maybe I'm missing something on this when we're going to come to the assessments. That's a lot of classroom time. They're missing already, and now we're going to take more away. And I think the assessments are important, because we need to see where these students are. We don't want them to fall behind, and then we can't catch them up. But I don't know about that.
Mrs. Johnson, I didn't outline the parameters for remote instruction and what it is. I have every confidence in our teachers and their ability to teach and assess our kids and have them make gains. And when you see the goals that I've laid out, there's high expectations for people to meet those and bridge any learning gaps the kids have. But we did kindergarten screening today, and if we can assess kids who haven't been in school in five months, I'm pretty confident we can deliver assessments, whether or not we go hybrid, or if we can stay in remote.
I hope we can, because we're going to be putting a lot, it's like putting a square peg in a round hole, trying to get it all done. And I've got confidence, but, you know, I think it's a lot to do in a small amount of time. And to expect to get, you know, great, I should say, hopefully, we will get great results, but we're putting a lot of pressure on our teachers to get a lot done in a small amount of time, and also on our students to perform and excel. And so that's what I'm concerned about. And I think it's a reasonable, you know, concern, basically. So, but thank you very much. I appreciate your answers.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Timmons?
Oh, Gav, can you clarify something for me, please? During the remote after October 5th, it's not just remote, it's also hybrid and remote, a combination of both, right? Okay. Because I don't want the public to think that they're going to be in hybrid and then you disappear for the other time. So it's remote and hybrid, a combination of both, and that's important to know. I also want to, I've been in remote for the last two days, because I'm filling in for one of the parents, one of my children's kids, because she has to work and her husband has to work, so I fill in. And they've been doing-- And they've been doing a good job. I mean, get their baskets before the class has started, all the material. I guess Jessica contested that because she had children in school. But we've been doing pretty good in the remote. And I got high school, elementary, and middle school kids sitting at the same table. So we had to say, no, you go into the bedroom and you do this because the noise factor. And there is some glitches in it, and I noticed the glitches came from the Chromebook, not the laptop. If you had a Chromebook, you most likely have some type of glitch, either with the teacher or with the Chromebook itself. And it could have been because they had construction out here today, I don't know. But I found that to be the case, that when it's on a regular laptop, no problem. But in the Chromebook, there's some glitches, because one of the kids have a Chromebook from the school. And that one seemed to have a glitch. But the other computers was, the family's computers did not have a glitch.
I think that's probably an accurate statement, Ms. Timmons. I think, and I think it has to do probably with the processing speed of the Chromebook and just what it is, and everybody being online at nine AM in the morning. So hopefully, as things get rolling a little bit, we'll get the kinks worked out. I know people, some other families, we didn't all have like the Zoom code to start, but I think the teachers sent out, they did a good follow-up with the emails. So I noticed there are a couple of kids who weren't able to log in Monday or Tuesday. They were able to log in on today. So I think it's, you know, I think it is gonna, the teachers are really giving it a hundred and ten percent, so.
But the training is phenomenal, it is really good. I had no problem with my second grader, although I said, okay, you need to really focus. And he did, his mother said to focus and he won't, but if I say to focus, he did. So there's a difference, who tell that child to focus? So it just was wonderful. And I thank those teachers that's doing a really phenomenal job remotely.
Thank you.
If I can add something?
Yes, Ms. Johnson.
I thank you, Ms. Timmons, for letting some of us know, who don't have students or any family members in the system, what you saw, because it kind of gives us the vision that we don't have. So I'm glad to hear that, that's why I asked the questions the way I did, because I don't have anybody left in the system. But I'm glad you do have family members that are important to you, and then you get to see from different levels how successful it is. So thank you very much for your input, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Paula.
Right, thank you, all right. So that was a pretty good update. We're looking forward to seeing how the elementary school students fare over the next couple of weeks here. I have a lot of faith that it's just gonna keep getting better as we roll things on and get used to our schedules. So finally, we have a serious topic, suicide prevention and education in schools. And we have quite a lengthy document included in our packets on that, or maybe it's not lengthy, maybe that was the other one. So yes, Dr. McKinney, would you, oh, that's just the, I'm sorry, this was just the policy. Yes, could you go ahead and tell us about this?
Yes, so you have a copy of the technical advisory and a sample policy of legislation that was passed that becomes effective this past July 1. Basically, the bill does two things. It asks public schools to develop a policy that guides into the development and implementation of a coordinated plan to prevent, assess the risk of intervene and respond to suicide. And then the second part of the law requires that school districts provide a minimum of two hours on training and suicide awareness and prevention every year. So I'm asking for your help and support with the first part, referring this to policy for policy development. We have a sample policy included from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. And then for the second part, I've been working with the K-12 Guidance Leadership Team on developing a plan to give our faculty two hours of suicide awareness and prevention this year. Many of them were trained last year in science of suicide. This certainly coordinates with our work with social motor learning, multi-tiered systems of support and behavior and wellness. So I'd like to first have a policy in place, two, come back and bring the plan, and then three, go ahead and administer trainings with staff. Obviously, this is not on everybody's mind right now with remote instruction, but certainly something we need to do to be in compliance with the law.
Thank you, I think the subject is very important. We've got so much trauma going around citywide, statewide, nationwide. It's really important that we make sure that we're there for our students, and hopefully it doesn't get to a point where we're talking about these kind of measures. But I think it's really good to make everyone aware of things going on. So I think you have my support on making sure this policy is in place, making sure it's thorough and vetted through the policy committee. I think, and then do you know if the New Hampshire Board, the whatever that is, the all the letters, do they, will they provide a, they may have professional development for that that's affordable? Has that, have you checked into that yet, or is that what you're planning on using?
They do have a sample policy, and I certainly want to sit with Mr. Parker and the K-12 Guidance Leadership Team, and then bring that to hopefully maybe the next policy meeting, so that can be presented for review and discussion.
Excellent, do I have any questions from the committee on this? Yeah, yes, Ms. Johnson?
I'll let Ms. Timmons go first, and then I'll.
I just was gonna see, is, do we vote on that or we just send it over there? How does that work?
I would say probably we make a motion to send it over to the policy committee.
Oh, I don't know, nobody's saying anything.
That's appropriate, that's appropriate, correct.
Make a motion to send it to policy for review and adaptation of policy.
Okay.
Do we need to keep a portion of it here to talk about curriculum moving forward for the portion we have to keep with students, or is that a separate element?
The part that would come back to curriculum would be the part around the plan for training on two hours for suicide prevention and awareness. So I would bring that back to this committee here.
Okay, excellent, all right. So do either of the other members have any commentary on this?
I just want to ask a question, I kind of, back in the day when I was on this board, a policy similar to this that had to do with bullying came before us, that the state put in effect, that we had to accept at the board level, something to this effect. I guess my question is, how did that ever work out with that bullying policy? Have we ever tweaked it? Because I'm looking at that, because that is such an integral part of the suicide prevention. When kids get bullied and they get to the point that they can't handle it anymore. So I want to know if this can be somewhat integrated together that we, you know, bullying can become a part of this. I, you know, so, but I'm thinking about the legislation that came down, and I know that bullying still had continued in schools. So I want to make sure that if we're passing something, and I know the state put it through, that it has a force and effect to, for us to be very aware. And we take these actions strongly, because like I said, bullying still goes on in school. And the more they get bullied, a lot of them will commit suicide because of this.
I think, I think, in my opinion, the case there would be, the policy would be two separate items, but the training, when we are looking for action steps and recognizing signs and things like that, I think that's one of the things that we're gonna be discussing, is that it can be a cause and effect relationship, not necessarily, but it can be. It's something that we can be aware of.
Well, I think we need to have that, because we know what happens with kids when they get bullied in school, and they feel that they have no place to turn. And if we're gonna be putting something like this in, I think there needs to be somewhere like a connection with all this. Just my two thoughts in my opinion, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. McKinney?
Just two things, one, to Ms. Johnson's question around the bullying policy. As a former building administrator, I know the policy very well and the procedures. And yes, we do follow it, and yes, I know the ins and outs of that. To the second part of your question, in terms of policy review, Ms. Consella and Mr. Donovan are working with the New Hampshire School Boards Association for them to conduct a review of all our policies, to see which ones are up to date, out of date, and that may need revision. But this particular policy or proposed suicide prevention goes in the Section J for students. So everything that impacts students would be all in one section, and they do kind of complement each other, so. Oh, Ms. Consella, well.
Yes, Ms. Consella?
Just to answer Ms. Johnson's question, it was originally approved in 2001. It has been revised twice since, 2003 and '04, and also in 2010. So we've kept up with it, you know, Dr. McKinney is correct. It is in Section J, as this policy would be as well. And we can inter-reference them together as well.
I think that's a good idea, and yeah, see, I was right, I knew when I was on the board, 2000 to 2001, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, that, I'm happy to do that. All right, so I guess I am looking for a motion to send the issue of our Suicide Prevention Education in Schools policy to the Policy Committee for further review.
Moved.
All right, so I gave the last one to Ms. Johnson and Ms. Timmons, so this way, Ms. Timmons, you get the credit. All right, so Ms. Timmons, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes, and it passes unanimously to go to, over to the Policy Committee for further review. So, all right, I think we're gonna wrap it up. Dr. McKinney, do you have anything else to add this evening?
No, Ms. Brown, other than I'd ask the board and the public, just, it's a difficult time to be an educator, and if everybody could just exercise a little more kindness, grace, and patience, and thank an educator when possible, that would be great, so thank you.
We try to do that every day.
Yes, ma'am. Gloria, Ms. Timmons, we might need you as a substitute teacher soon, after you're talking about remote learning.
Yeah.
All right, do I have any comments from the board?
I do have one comment, and I want to thank Tara, Ms. Consella. She has her in mind, it's just fantastic, but you answered my question anyway, because I know the revision wasn't during my tenure on the board. But my God, you got those dates down, this is incredible, knowledgeable you are. Thank you for that, and we do need to update that policy. Thank you, Paula, for bringing it up anyway.
You're welcome.
All right, well, thank you very much. Good luck to all the students and teachers and families that are working together right now through this unique time in history, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Yeah, there you go, Gloria.
All right, so Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Yes, on the motion, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, and Ms. Brown votes yes. The meeting is adjourned at 6:14, thank you very much.
What time is the next meeting?
6:30, stay tuned.
Okay.